Okay, good evening, everyone. The work session of the ISD 279 School Board Meeting is being held in the Forum Room of the Educational Service Center, 11200 93rd Avenue North in Maple Grove, on Tuesday, February 6, 2024. The work session is being audio recorded. The recording will be made available on the district website within two business days after the work session has ended. The intent of the school board work session is to allow for the school board discussion of topics. Work sessions do not include an opportunity for audience members to address the board. To acknowledge attendance this evening, I'll ask that all present at the table state their name, starting with to my left.
Jackie Moscato-Jones, school board member.
Steve Bliss, Assistant Superintendent for the Elementary Schools.
Anthony Patonis, Executive Director of Technology.
Heather Douglas, School Board Director.
Laurel Anderson, Executive Director of Human Resources.
Kayballa, Executive Director of Community Relations.
Ethan Nirdal, Coordinator of Indian Education.
Jacobary, Vice Chair of AIPAC.
Katie Perry, AIPAC member.
Brian Susan Hall, Executive Director of Community Engagement.
Brian Bass, Assistant Superintendent for Equity and Achievement.
Sarah Mitchell, School Board Member.
Amy Moore, General Counsel.
Thomas Brooks, School Board Member.
Tamara Grady, She-Her-Hers, School Board Member.
Kim Hiles, Superintendent.
And I, Tanya Prince, School Board Member and Present. The purpose of the school board work session is to build trust and teamwork, to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. I'll now ask Dr. Hile for her check-in for the work session. Dr. Hile?
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. We're excited with the group that we have here this evening to present all of our stakeholders. Most of all, we're honored to have our American Indian Education Parent Committee Advisory Group. I do want to take time, yous probably not going to like it, but Ethan Nirdal, who's our Coordinator of Indian Education, I just want to put in a word of your sheer brilliance and our honor to be in your presence. People do not know how smart you are, and we're grateful to have you here. So with Ethan this evening, we do have, they have mentioned, our committee chair, Nicole Perry, and our co-chair, Katie Perry. So go ahead, please.
Sure. Thank you for listening to us this evening. Minnesota Statute, Section 124D, Point 78, requires Minnesota districts with 10 or more American Indian students to have an American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Specifically, the statute cites that school boards and American Indian schools must provide for the maximum involvement of parents and children enrolled in education programs, programs for elementary and secondary grades, special education, and support services. To be compliant with the statutory requirement, districts, charters, and tribal schools are required to submit an annual compliance document to the Office of American Indian Education by March 1 of each year, also known as the vote of concurrence or non-concurrence. Annual compliance is a valuable opportunity for American Indian Parent Advisory Committee members to meet and discuss whether or not they concur with the educational offerings that have been extended by the district to American Indian students. So this evening, we have two of our parents here with us to share an update on the vote and the resolution.
Let me just refer to our reading. We, the members of the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, also known as AIPAC, extend our greetings and appreciation for your ongoing commitment to the education and welfare of American Indian students within our district. Our collaboration is grounded in the shared goal of fostering an educational environment that respects and promotes the rich heritage and unique needs of the American Indian students, as mandated by the Minnesota Statute, 2023, Section 124D, 78. This statute is not merely a legal requirement. It represents a commitment to ensuring that American Indian students are provided with educational programs that honor their cultural identity, meet their academic needs, and equip them with success in a diverse and changing world. It mandates that the involvement of parents and children in the development and evolution of education programs, including those for elementary and secondary grades, special education, and support services. This involvement is crucial for creating a learning environment that is inclusive, respectful, and responsive to the needs of American Indian students and their families. In accordance with the statute, and as a part of our duty to access and contribute to the educational offerings provided by the district, we convened and conducted our annual review and to issue our vote on the concurrence or non-concurrence with the educational services provided of American Indian students during this academic year. After thorough review and discussion, it was a sense of accomplishment and optimism that we issue a vote of concurrence. This decision attests to our findings that the school board and our district are in full compliance with the requirements of the Minnesota statutes. Furthermore, it reflects our assessment that the educational offerings and support services provided are meeting the diverse needs of American Indian students in our district. We would like to express our special appreciation for the addition of Dakota and Ojibwe language classes to the curriculum by the Indian Education Department. This initiative not only enriches the educational experience of our students, but also plays a crucial role in the preservation and revitalization of our languages. By incorporating Dakota and Ojibwe languages into the school program, the district has taken a significant step towards fostering an environment where American Indian students can connect more deeply with their identity. Our concurrence is based on observed improvements and ongoing initiatives that align with the goals of maximizing parental involvement and ensuring the educational success of American Indian students. It acknowledges the efforts made by educators, administrators, and the school board to integrate culturally relevant materials into the curriculum to support the professional development of teachers on the American Indian culture histories and to foster an environment where American Indian students feel valued, understood, and empowered. As we move forward, we remain committed to working closely with the school board, educators, and the community to build on the successes achieved and to address any emerging challenges. Our partnership is essential for sustaining an educational environment that respects and celebrates our contributions of American Indian students and their heritage. We appreciate the opportunity to collaborate in this vital work and look forward to continuing our joint efforts to enhance the educational experience of American Indian students.
Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you for coming today. We appreciate it. We will continue our work. Thank you. Next, we're going to address disparities for Black Indigenous and all students of color.
I'm sorry, Darrell. Sorry to interrupt. Did anybody have any questions? Was there anything else that you wanted to add for us to the board to know? I know this has been a long partnership and a long road, and we've really sought to make a lot of improvements. So I just want to make sure I pause for a moment.
The only, so first question I had is, were there any specific recommendations that came out of AIPAC meetings that board members need to know about, that need continued improvement or significant improvement?
There have been a lot of improvements, especially this year. But I think the main thing across the board is that there is tutoring, outside educational services for the students. I'd say that would be the main thing that has come from every meeting. I think it's been an ongoing issue from past years that is continuing. So we're going to try and really focus on trying to partner with that and hopefully get that first instance.
I, so I actually sort of had a good feeling as you were reading that, and that's the first time, I think I've had that feeling in this meeting. So I just wanted to shout out, like, AIPAC parents for just continuing to be persistent and pushing the district to make those improvements. And then also just wanted to shout out district staff for all of the work in getting to this point. It's actually a bit of a relief to hear a positive report.
We have some really committed advisors that are really helping our students, like, be engaged. So that's a very welcoming thing for us, too, that it's, it's a great partnership. It's not just like us parents pushing, it's those advisors and the kids having that relationship. Yeah. And Nicole, can I ask, or Katie, how many of you parents, how many are on the committee? At the moment, four, five, six of us. Yeah. I was like, hey, this is very tough. Great, thank you.
And Ethan, thank you so much for all of your work. I know you bring a lot of creative and innovative ideas and challenge the district and have year after year. So I just really appreciate that and the work that you've done personally to invest. Any other?
I just wanted to say again, just to echo, thank you for all your work that you do for our scholars and our Indigenous scholars. And I go around bragging about our Ojibwe and Dakota language classes now. So thank you for, Ethan, for doing that and for, you know, working collaboratively with parents to do that. So I'm just really excited to see where we go from here.
Now we got to keep going. We don't want to move backward at all.
Ethan won't let us do this. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thanks for coming.
Sorry.
No, 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 we're good. Thank you. So our next introduction will address, and Dr. Bass will speak more to it. I'll let you go ahead and speak to it.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Moscato-Jones, Vice Chair Simons, members of the board, Superintendent Hile, and all of you who have joined us this evening. I just, I can't express our appreciation enough to have leaders and staff from buildings joining us this evening to share some of the emerging best practices that are demonstrating impact on addressing achievement disparities in our system. So as you may recall, in our October Board Work Session, we presented Vision Card for Strategic Direction E, and board members discussed the possibility of receiving examples of evidence-based practices that currently demonstrate a positive impact on increasing the achievement of Black Indigenous and students of color across the district. Tonight, we are excited to share highlights of emerging best practices that are interrupting achievement disparities across the district. We will also be showing key data related to the impact of these practices on student achievement. So joining me this evening is our Director of Learning and Achievement, Robin Zolos, and educators from several of our sites. So we have Wynne Sanders, Laura Wagman, Melissa Zoni.
Very good.
All right. Julia Frum and Chris.
Candy.
All right. So, so grateful for you all. All right, so are you controlling slides for us?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so our outcomes in for this presentation, board members will learn about some recently implemented evidence-based practices that are strengthening high-quality core instruction for students K through 12, and learn about how these practices are interrupting achievement disparities. There it is. That's how it works. So we're all familiar with our strategic priorities. And when we look at what we're showcasing tonight, we're looking at evidence of practices that align to what we're trying to do to address high-quality core instruction, as well as how we're trying to accelerate student achievement for all scholars. And so we're excited to showcase some of that this evening. So when we talk about high-quality core instruction, this framework was created and established last summer. It has been a year-long focus, will be a multi-year focus, and we're going to be zooming in to articulate more and more this upcoming summer of what we mean by high-quality core instruction. Another way of saying this is, what is good teaching, right, in ICL area schools? And so each of these four components, we have identified what are some of the things that we do in the district that align to each of these four areas. So I'm going to share a little bit about what each of these four are, starting with safe, welcoming, and inclusive learning environments. They ensure that all students' intrinsic value is honored. Genuine positive relationships form the centerpiece of high-quality core instruction. So what does this look like in practice? This looks like non-verbal classroom management strategies. It looks like PBIS. It looks like restorative practices. It looks like our newly adopted SEL curriculum. It looks like identity-based lessons. It also looks like our newly adopted identity-based farm protocol. To the right, equitable grading practices ensure that our grading practices are based on grade-level standards and that all students have access to rigorous grade-level learning. So this looks like standards for grading and reporting. At the secondary level, it looks like a learning-focused gradebook, and it also looks like our standards-based IEPs for students receiving specialized services. The third area, guaranteed and viable curriculum, ensures that no matter which school a student attends, they are guaranteed the same learning outcomes through the use of high-quality instructional materials aligned with grade-level standards. So this looks like an equitable curriculum review process, district-provided high-quality instructional materials, and it looks like requests for reevaluation of instructional materials through an equity lens. And the last area, pedagogy of voice, which is what you're going to see this evening, is ensuring all students are actively involved during instruction and are not passive recipients of instruction. This can be accomplished with high rates of opportunities to participate, ample time to practice skills, and prompt feedback. So this looks like the work we're doing with AVID, the work we're doing with NUA, the work we're doing with multilegal essential practices, the lesson plan framework around CLEAR, as well as mini-curriculum-based approaches. Last slide before I hand it off to Robin. So we talk about, in our strategic plan that we adopted, having through lines, right? How do we make sure that the work that we're articulating at the highest level of the system, that it actually, right, moves its way through our leaders, right, into our teachers, and then into classrooms that the students have those experience? So the arrow there is representing the through line of these efforts. So last spring, when we started reimagining the work for our learning leaders, all of the feedback we received was, we've got to get narrow on our focus. We've really got to attack what high-quality core instruction is for our system. And we focused this year with our leaders on safe, welcoming, and inclusive learning environments and pedagogy of voice. Then, so that happens at the system and site leaders level, and then that work through our SDAs and through our coaches gets to our buildings through monthly PD. And so these efforts to reinforce high-quality core instruction happens at the school level for our teachers. So that's what is the coherence we're trying to create around high-quality core instruction. So at this time, I'll hand it off to Robin to introduce our guests and get to what we really are excited to see.
So, good evening, everyone. I'm super excited about this presentation. I am going to start out by really talking about the high-quality core instruction that Dr. Bass just talked about. You will see that throughout each of these video clips that we've got tonight, and each of the teachers that are present are going to speak to what's happening in the video and why that's impactful for students. So we really chose a few of the, a few instructional practices that are happening across our system that we feel are having a high impact on student achievement. So that's what we're seeing here tonight. And also, you can see that all of the information that we're sharing is really aligned to Strategic Direction E and E. So Wynne Sanders is going to start us, or I'm sorry, Laura Wagman is going to start us today, and she's going to be talking about Concept Quest. And Concept Quest is implemented across our system, and Laura's going to talk about how it's implemented at Crestview and the impact it's happening, I'm sorry, the impact it's having on students. So, you want to start?
Yes. Thank you for having me here to be able to talk about our story at Crestview. Our story is wonderful and great because of our leader, Stephanie Webster. With her leadership, our value is every single child, every single day. And she has pulled together a team who has created a structure so that we have systems in place so Concept Quest can happen every single day. Our leadership through Carrie Volrath and our tag teacher, Diana King, she is there every day, and her belief in children, they flock to her when she comes into our classrooms. And teachers like Caitlin Lagener, who's over here, they believe that every single child can do wonderful things, and they never, ever give up. So thank you. I'm so honored to be able to speak for them and the great work that they do. Concept Quest is enrichment for all through choice, and it is part of our math curriculum. So you think about how we already have something embedded. For so many years, we've looked for something else to challenge all of our students, and this is something that aligns with what our students are learning in their daily, in their daily math curriculum, and it's connected with those units. It is really challenging, and it's really fun, and it's every child has access every single day. There are excursions, which are taking the content that they're learning and applying it in a novel way, and then there are adventures. And the adventures really rely on creativity and perseverance and really that grit that we're talking about that we want in our students, because they can be very difficult. And we're really lucky with our teachers, because with their collaboration with our tag teacher, they've built those routines and structures. When I was looking at your graphic from before, those structures and routines are critical for any learning to happen. And they've done a great job of, we believe in you, every one of you can do these, these challenges. It's also about the choice, and kids thinking about their learning and that self-efficacy, those real-world skills we need in each of our children. What do I need today? Do I need a challenge, or do I want to do some extra practice? And also, their joy. Our teachers love to teach math. You walk into a classroom, there is joy in every single one of them, and that infectious, "I want a challenge," is pervasive. If you ever want to come and see it, it is beautiful. I'm so grateful for our teachers. And they work with Diana, our tag teacher. She comes in one day a week, and she offers support, she offers feedback for our kids, and a time for them to get some time for reflection and to be able to redo some of their, their work. And one of the most beautiful things about this, as I said, our vision at Crestview is an inclusive and safe environment where every scholar is seen as unique, gifted, and capable. We have a welcoming community, which we believe in equitable access for everyone. High expectations and rigorous learning, because it's all about belonging. And while I would love to sit here and talk to you about math all day long, like, I could, anytime you want to talk about math, I can't do justice with these beautiful fourth graders they're going to show you.
If A, B, and C are different digits, so, but so if you, these two, see, if you want to see, they will have to be the same number. I put A, and I did nine plus eight, it was seventeen. So, and then I put one up here with the D's, and then these two have two. One, and then, and then one plus one plus one plus three, and then eight plus nine plus seventeen, and then the same thing.
So in history, because you have to, have to find what age they were at death. It tells you the year, like, when they were born, and then the year when they died, but you have to subtract to find the age that they died at. Have to subtract. Yeah, but you have to subtract, because first it was a little challenging, but then I found out, and it was actually getting easier. But when I added eight plus nine, it was seventeen, so I just put the one, and I found out both of these were one, put them the same number, that they do the same thing. And then I kept looking, and I put nine plus eight, and then I got the answers.
Great practices, but I feel like the Concept Quest, they challenge you rein.
Yeah. Don't give up.
Mm-hmm. Keep on rising up, keep reaching to, to overtime.
Don't give up, don't give up.
Don't ever say you can't.
Don't say you can't, really, because if you, if you don't really, just keep trying, and you get better and better.
It makes everything.
And better.
It makes perfect.
Yeah, I'm not sure how I can even top that. Thank you, Cradwell. And as you can see.
If A, B, and C are different digits.
Our students are reflecting, they're taking on challenges. Their real-world skills that we want in our community are evident. They know that they can do hard things, and they crave the challenge. And it is beautiful to watch the feedback that they're getting and the joy in mathematics. We have a fifth-grade group of boys who have requested a math field trip, and so I've been trying to partner with a nonprofit, a friend of mine works for a nonprofit. What does that look like? We have third graders who come in for lunch and ask if they can do math with me. They love math. We have students on IEPs who say, "I am really good at math, so I'm going to work with Ms. King every time she comes in my classroom." I can't walk down a hallway without a child asking me, "Can we just please do math together?" It has ferreted out into everything in a joyful way of being. And one of the things that I am most proud of is, we had a team of people from WISADA asked to come watch Concept Quest. It were, they were fifth-grade teachers, curriculum and directors from Teaching and Learning, and their, one of their main takeaways was, there is a culture of love here in which every single child is cared about and the high expectations are prevalent. So I think when you ask about what's the success between those girls and that comment, we're finding success every day. So thank you for letting me speak to you.
On this slide, you will see some data. So as we're implementing programs and practices across the system, we start working on, like, how can we start measuring the impact of these practices? What data aligns most closely with the activities that are happening in the classroom and the experiences that children are having? So as we're looking at data, this is Crestview's spring to fall to spring math growth data, and we're really focused on our students of color, our BIPOC students for this. Our goal is to show growth, right? We want to show growth, and we want to exceed the national average of growth. And so you can see the groups that were called out as exceeding the national average of growth for math from fall to spring last year. And we're going to continue to measure this across our system.
Robin?
Yes?
Just, sorry, just a quick question. I noticed that the Palmer Lake slide has additional demographic categories.
Yep.
Why is this one?
Well, so we have, there's a couple of reasons for that. Crestview has a smaller population, so some of the categories didn't have a large enough cell size to record on. And then there's, we really wanted to focus, we're looking at, where are we finding the successes? We're really focusing on the successes and the things that the sites do, but this data is really drilled down to the specific students to see where their growth is and what the impact is. And so this may not have all of the groups, because we're looking at, like, okay, what's happening with our Asian English-speaking students that they're, they have, I mean, sixty-seven percent of them are achieving growth and, and more than that are, more than the national average are achieving aggressive growth. So we really focused on the students that were really being successful, because that's what we're trying to dig in for those areas of success. But it also could be cell system.
I might just want to follow up on that separately.
Sure, absolutely.
Yeah.
So our next person who will be speaking is Wynne Sanders, and she's going to be talking about Number Corner. Number Corner is a component of our math instruction, it's part of Bridges in Mathematics, and I'll let her describe it a little bit more.
Great. Good evening. Thank you so much for allowing me this space. As a math coach at Palmer Lake Elementary, it is my privilege to support teachers in strengthening material in math instruction. The intentional support and implementation of Number Corner that's taken place at Palmer Lake includes teachers engaging in monthly planning nights focusing in on Number Corner, discussion of, of PL, or data, there are PLTs, teachers participating in peer observations around Number Corner. And this year, we're going to be utilizing a reflection tool where teachers are able to self-identify where they are in the implementation of Number Corner. So what is Number Corner? Number Corner is one of three essential components of our elementary curriculum, math curriculum. This component consists of short daily workouts that introduce, reinforce, or extend critical skills and concepts that are being studied within each grade level. During this time, students are discussing patterns, they're sharing their thinking, they're justifying their thinking, and it's something that is very magical to see, students are, are the math authorities, the math leaders at this time. What you will, something to call out about Number Corner is that it is a low-floor, high-ceiling component of our math curriculum, which means that it allows each and every scholar access to math, and it is also an opportunity for scholars' voices to be elevated.
Have more than half red or less than half red?
More than half.
More than half. What if I were to switch it? Would I have more than half or less than half?
Less than half.
Less than half red, very good. Yeah, well, we've done so far this month. Look at our graph here. What do you notice about the data on our graph? Turn on top, what do you notice?
I noticed.
So, twelve, then I took, I took away seven, so I fingered.
Yeah, you're smart.
Yes, you are. X.
Um, I noticed that, um, they, they went by number order, but they skipped two.
Oh, maybe. So we have oh, four, three, and one, but we don't have two on there. I'll say bring it, you'll say back, bring it.
Back.
Bring it.
Back.
Maya?
A picture.
Maya thinks a picture graph, where I see some connection signs. Sean, what do you think?
Twelve plus fourteen.
Ooh, twelve plus fourteen. Why do you think twelve plus fourteen?
Because thirteen plus plus one, it's fourteen, and eleven, and, and twelve.
Oh, so you think we're gonna see like one more on this number and one more on this number?
So what you may have noticed in the video is the teacher facilitating this Number Corner conversation. And it's the scholars' engagement with the mathematical concepts, um, that's kind of driving the conversation. Um, through this engagement, our teachers have noted an excitement around math. Teachers are actually blown away by the predictions and the mathematical connections that students are making, sometimes making those predictions and connections before the teacher actually even realizes it. So that's super fun to see. Um, teachers have also shared that scholars are transferring their knowledge from Number Corner to other mathematical components of the day. They are taking their strategies that they're learning during Number Corner, vocabulary and mathematical models, and applying that into the other components of math. Um, but most importantly, in my conversations with teachers, they have shared that scholars are taking ownership of Number Corner. Um, they are bold in sharing their thinking, justifying their thinking. And they are the brave mathematicians who are taking risks and are unafraid to make mistakes during Number Corner. The scholars are confidently contributing to their classroom community. It's exciting to see.
Have more than half red or less than half?
Clicking is always tricky for me. So, again, we're looking at the fast bridge, fast bridge growth, um, from last fall, last spring. And students, what I didn't say earlier is students in grades two through five take fast bridge assessments. So this is looking at two through five and the different groups. Again, our goal is to show growth and to exceed the national average for growth. And you can see the different groups that are listed here as they're going on. So we have a big group of Asian students. And then the subgroups under that are Asian English, Asian that speak a different language, and mom. And then we have our black students and then the subgroups underneath, or the student groups underneath, um, the black. Showing. And as, um, we talked about before, Palmer Lake has a larger population than Crestview or the population in the sequencer. Melissa Pizzoni is going to talk about, um, programming that is aligned to structured literacy and the strategies that contributes in the classroom. So Melissa works, I'll let you describe. I definitely take your words.
Good evening Superintendent Hiles, Silver Members, Oseo Community. Uh, my name is Melissa Pizzoni. Um, I'm a proud teacher at Zane Wood Community School. It's my home school, it's the very first school that I began my career. And so Zane Wood always has a special place in my heart, um, along here with my proud principal, Ms. Pendleton. Um, we have really, really done some, uh, changes within our WIN program, what we call is what I need. Um, one of the things that's important for us, you'll notice that it says Zane Wood Acceleration, is just really changing the mindset, uh, when we talk about our kids that need additional support. Um, we know that we can't intervene our way out of, um, tier-one issues. And so we're really working together, um, to provide acceleration for our kids. And one of the phrases that we use often is confidence builds competence. And so we want our students to be confident in their learning. And so, um, what you'll see here are kids, um, who are striving readers, but really the relationship that they're building with our, um, peer professional here, um, really allows them, um, time to have that additional practice, that small group time where they're working specifically on skills that they need at their level. And, um, as the Title One Lead, I'm a Title One Lead teacher at Zane Wood. Part of my role is to facilitate our academic programming. And we have our screener, we talked a lot about Fast Bridge. Um, we use that screener as a, a starting point. And then we use additional diagnostics, we use phonics diagnostics to really hone in on what are the specific skills that those students are needing to accelerate and how can we bring in additional resources, um, to help them to show growth. And what was really important for me, um, as a classroom teacher, I am able to receive all the professional development. Um, I think our Learning and Attainment Department has done a wonderful job with providing professional development for teachers to learn about the science of reading. And we're moving towards structured literacy. And so we want our ESPs also to have that same foundation. And when we're talking about moving teachers in a certain direction, we wanna make sure that our, all of our staff have that same foundation. And so I have taken the task of anything that I'm learning in professional development, I bring to our ESPs. And they, um, are so eager and so proud to be able to learn all of the instructional strategies that the teachers are learning. So in turn, they can apply them within, um, our intervention or acceleration groups. And so in this video, what you'll see, um, our fabulous ESP here, um, she has learned about orthographic mapping and how the brain learns to read and retain words. Um, so you'll see her using some of those strategies, um, in the intervention. Um, you'll also see, we have been learning, um, a lot about the importance of the new awareness. And when kids are learning to read, if they don't, um, if that part of the brain is not exercised and they're not learning how to manipulate sounds, um, that that's why some readers are struggling with reading. And so we wanna hone in on that pillar of reading as well. And so you'll see she has a, um, sound wall, um, where she's practicing a short vowel sound. And she's implementing that as well in her, in her teaching. And so all of these strategies are what the teachers are learning, but our ESPs are also getting that same professional development. And so that is a little bit of what you'll see, um, with this clip here.
Tom, before you rise, look at me. When you chop her, let's chop the words first. Word, word is Tom's. Chuk, ah, hmm, Tom. How many letters in there?
Three.
Chuk, ah, hmm. Beautiful. You done with that? Okay. So the next word is chuk. When you chop now, I do, I want to practice it first. Chuk, ah. Three songs again. Chuk, ah. Very nice. Okay, the next word is huh. Time, okay, start, three, two, one.
I, I am Tom. He is Ron.
Uh. Sound it out.
Duck.
Not sound it out. What is the P-song make?
Ah. The, huh.
Beautiful.
Ron got on the top of, of the.
Say the same word.
Huh.
Nice.
I see pet. And he's so cute.
So what does the N-song make?
Hmm, all the flowers.
Uh-huh. Beautiful.
So one of the things I loved about this, that usually our, um, ESPs, the kids are smiling, they're having fun. They were so nervous. They're like, oh my gosh, we have to do it. So they were just sitting there and they were like, we have to do it perfectly. And so, um, the video doesn't really capture just that when we talked about the energy and the, the excitement. You know, they, they were, they really wanted to do a good job of showing exactly like, I, I'm, I'm sitting here and I'm stoic and I'm doing everything. So I, you know, I kind of wish that we had like a, a little bug on the wall so to just really see, um, just the genuine nature that our staff works, uh, with our students and our scholars. And, you know, I think that, um, I talked a little bit about, you know, programs, um, don't teach teachers do and staff do. And so part of the success, I believe, too, as long, along with the instructional strategies, is just that personal relationship that our teachers and our staff have with our scholars because it does allow them to take risks, as we talked about. Um, because if I'm a, a struggling reader, a striving reader, you know, it's, it's going to be hard for me to make those mistakes and, um, to take those chances and those risks. But, um, we really have great staff who go, really go above and beyond. Um, and, and the kids, uh, feel safe in that space and trusted to be able to take on those things. Um, and I'm just really proud of our students, um, our teachers as well. And I think one of the other pieces in terms of when we talk about high-quality instruction and acceleration is that we, this is a team. It's a team effort and we're not working in silos. We're, uh, working alongside our ESPs and our teachers, um, and all of the departments in our school. And we're having, um, joint conversations about kids. And, um, I'm just so proud of the work, um, that they all do. And we're, we're on this journey together because we know that reading has changed a lot, math instruction has changed a lot from, you know, when we were growing up. And so, um, everyone has just done an amazing job to make those changes. And, and you can see it in the smiles when the kids come into these spaces every day that they're excited to take on risks. And, and, um, you can see that in the students who are receiving acceleration services, that they're starting to make aggressive growth.
Tom.
When we look at the data, one of the things we're looking at, um, to measure, um, acceleration or the support that we're giving in literacy is a reading scores. And again, that's an assessment that students in grades second through fifth grade take. And on the slide, you can see the groups that are making growth above the national average. So we're really focused on that. We're, we're seeing the successes and trying to make sure that we can, um, figure out what's working so well there and make those successes across all areas. Next, we have Maker Grove Middle School. And Julia Fromm is gonna talk about the AVID program. And AVID is being, um, implemented across our secondary sites this school year. And it is a program that is done in electives, but it's also done school-wide. So Julia, just speak for that.
Hi, I'm so grateful to be here to speak with you about this. Um, my name is Julia Fromm. I'm the AVID coordinator and elective teacher at Maker Grove Middle School. I'm here with my phenomenal principal, uh, Mr. Smith, over there in the corner.
Well, you ought to say that.
No, she's kidding. Um, I get so excited and a bit emotional talking about AVID. This is my fifteenth year of teaching and I would not still be a teacher. Um, probably if it wasn't for the, um, structures and the strategies that this program allows me to be in my classroom. Um, I imagine it, if, if you've ever been on an athletics team or any sort of, uh, collective sport, it's sort of like that. Like we, I, I've heard my elementary colleagues talk about this is not, we don't look at our respective programs from a deficit mindset, we look at it from an additive mindset, and that's exactly what AVID is. Um, these students apply to be in, um, these cohorts. There's fifty-six seventh graders and fifty-six eighth graders. Um, and what we do is we build on the skills they already have and let them come and show up as they are and imagine themselves, you know, five, ten, fifteen years down the road. Obviously, we're not asking them to commit to anything, but just really getting them to figure out what they're good at and what they're passionate about and just letting them come and be themselves. Um, so the acronym stands for advancement via individual determination. But it is a collective space where students' success depends on each other and their willingness to show up in that space as, as, as a support system. Um, and when we get to the video in a second, you'll sort of see an example of that. You'll see kids laughing in the background. This isn't a place where kids sit in rows and just listen to me. I get to be the coach jelly from the sidelines while the kids scrimmage and play. Um, and that's a really, that's a really fun role to have rather than expecting it. It's, it's all them, I just get to be there and watch the magic, so. Um, it's a college and career readiness elective class. So my goal in the middle school elective is to prepare and empower them to take honors or AP classes in high school if they want, if they think that that's their most rigorous path. Um, I will say over eighty-five percent of my kids do. Um, I think next year's, uh, the eighth graders that have just enrolled in high school, I think almost a hundred percent of them are taking at least one AP or honors course. So, they feel prepared, they feel empowered to do that. And they know that when they get in those classes, they're already gonna have friendships with people and they'll have each other's back when things get hard. Um, so I'm gonna have Robyn hit play and then I'll kind of explain what they're doing when, when it's done.
What's confusing me is, you know, they're trying to find an X. Wait, how do I see this? Wait, can I just hear what she's making? So, when I'm. I always think, so I was like, Bush has. And then I didn't go over here to drop it down or no? I don't know if you guys can see on the text.
Well, I see you're like.
So you don't do it? Yeah, I did, wait, the last time there wasn't one, because I got confused.
Well, that is.
Yeah, you just have to make sure you multiply, so you, yeah, what I do is I multiply.
Since the sixth grade, like, I got good grades, but I didn't really know how to take notes. I didn't really know how to like really focus, how to do the work. And I didn't really do a great, I didn't know how to study. And then seventh grade, I got into AVID and it really helped me take notes and help me study. Help me realize like how studying now and being good grades now will help in high school. Because if you just lack off from middle school and then you go into high school, you're not just gonna magically get fours and good grades. And the first high school grade matters when you try to get into college. And so AVID has really helped me try to take notes. It's helped me do all that stuff, get good grades and it's helped me, like, when you go into AVID, if you have a safety guard, like, you're excited to go to class and teachers are making you more excited to be there, you wanna be there.
Being in AVID has just been like such a confidence booster. And, um, it's just helped me like academically and socially. Um, I feel like I'm just like a better person and like a happier person that, um, pays attention more and is more attentive to like things around me.
For me, being AVID has changed me as a student since I matured a lot during, when I was in seventh grade to now. Cause I noticed that a lot of my classmates, right, when we're taking notes in other class, they'll be like, Jade, what kind of notes are those? I'll be like, oh, they're cool notes, I thought everybody knew how to do them and stuff like that. And they're like, no, we never learned how to do that. I was like, oh, I'm really surprised by that, you know? And I feel like AVID has really helped me like get better as a person too. Cause like, I used to be like an immature kid, like I used to goof around a lot. But my teacher, Ms. Fromm, has helped me like build, like characterize a better person, learning how to get more organized with my planners and things like that, you know? Like staying out of tasks and helping with my grades too a lot. So I feel like.
Remember her, she's going to be president someday. Um, so what you just watched is a, um, a core pillar of the AVID elective class called tutorials. We do it peer style. So every student gets, uh, trained in how to conduct a peer tutorial. The pink sheet that Jade has in her hand is called a tutorial request form. So what happens is usually on Wednesday, the kids come to class with a question that they have, something they're struggling with in one of their other classes. Eighty percent of the time it's something they need help with. And then maybe twenty percent of the time it's something that they just wanna know more about and they wanna discuss on a deeper level. But we don't, um, we have to really break them of the idea that I have to be the smartest person in the room and flip that over. So part of what happens in the, the TRF process is they have to really analyze the question and what they don't know about it. So they start with the question from class, exactly what is it? Um, they break down what academic vocabulary do I need to know in order to answer this question or in order to be able to think about it like a scholar? Um, the next section of the TRF is what do I already know? Just a couple of things to help them sort of build their confidence and make a connection with what they're, what they're getting ready to ask about. Um, and then on the backside, which you can see Jade kind of has up, this is where they sort of. And then on the backside, which you can see Jade kind of has up, this is where they sort of like, their brain just explodes onto the paper, like, how wrong can I possibly be? Like, what is every single idea I have in my head that shows I have no idea what's going on here? And that's sort of how their value, which is partially on their vulnerability with, can I really show how, can I really show how incorrect my thinking is about this? So that I can see what they don't understand and so that their classmates can see what they don't understand. And so they can teach them in a different way that maybe I, that maybe I can't help them with. The last part, which is, which we make, we make a direct connection to college, is the tutorial question or the point of confusion. What exactly do you not understand about your question? And they have to put it in question form. The goal of that, and this is how, this is how I have the kids imagine themselves. And they get really excited about this. Imagine six years from now, you're, it's 9:00 PM and you're in the dorms and you have physics test tomorrow. And you guys cannot figure a question out. You need, you need help. You're all, you haven't been there yet, but you're all going to convene in the conference room of your dorm and you're going to have to work through this together. And you're not going to care if you're friends with the people around the table, your scholarship or your playing time in the basketball game or whatever is going to depend on you doing well. Or, you know, your money, whatever the case may be. And so their job is to collaborate. They all come with a different question, but they have to collaborate during that time and help each other maybe figure out the answer. But more often than not, success looks like coming up with more questions about that question. And then there's, you know, someone takes notes for you while you are presenting so that you have a resource to take back with you. So you either know how to solve that math problem again or you take it to your Socratic seminar in social studies so you have a resource. But there's also a spot, what other questions do I need to ask my teacher? And so it really puts the onus on the students, like, this is, I'm, this is my learning, this is my knowledge. This is how I need to address it and encounter it. And then, you know, being able to ask a good question. When you walk into a college setting and you don't have ready access to a professional or to a teacher or you, you need to be able to know exactly what you don't know when you get an appointment with that professor or that TA. So being able to narrow down exactly what I don't understand helps save them time and helps them practice that skill when they need to interact in a higher education environment and fill that gap of opportunity knowledge of this is how I ask questions as a scholar. So what you saw was them helping each other through this process. Jade had a math question. They might have a science question, which is, pops up a lot in especially seventh grade. But they really learn a lot about a lot of different things. And they learn a lot about each other in the process and it makes them a really tight, almost cult-like group. They're, they're avid pool parties, you know? It's, it's really cool to see, especially in middle school when it can be such a tumultuous experience for them.
So this data looks a little bit different than the other data we've been showing. What we did for this data is we took the very first elective class at Maple Grove Middle and we looked specifically at our BIPOC students and followed them now because they're 12th graders now. And so what you're seeing on this slide is the purple bar or the dark blue bar is the students, the BIPOC students who were in that first elective of Avid, which was in 2019, the 2019-20 school year. And the yellow bar is a control group that was very similarly matched to the students that were in that Avid class. So they had the same GPAs at the time, they had the same demographics, same MCA assessment scores. And so we matched them kind of very closely. And what you can see is the difference in their GPA. So the weighted GPA is the one for AP classes. So those are the grades of the students that are in an AP class and what that looks like. And then the unweighted is just the regular, not AP classes. So that's the difference in their GPA.
Can I add just a bit of context here? I need, I would need to check the number exactly, but in that first cohort of students who are now seniors, somewhere I think between 47 and 52% of them were students of color.
And so, yes, this is a. And this is that same group of students who took the ACT test last spring, so in 2023. And also that same control group that we were looking at earlier. And Tom has kind of helped us interpret the, the effect size for each of the differences. And that's where you see the small, moderate, small and large.
And last but not least, yeah, Chris Kandia is going to talk about. Talk to follow with all of this. But thank you very much for letting me speak. I feel honored because I feel like I'm the voice for the middle school English teachers here. And just a little bit of background, this is my 27th year teaching. And this is my second curriculum. My first curriculum, we got the, we Googled the Tellbooks, my first year teaching. This is the first new curriculum that I've been privileged to work with. And, and it's been an interesting journey because we had, we had a choice. As we look at guaranteed and viable curriculum, and when the program improvement process went through, we got to, we got to vote. Did we want to create our own curriculum as, as a level? Or did we want to get a purchased curriculum? And the majority of the middle school teachers said we would like something to start with. And so the high school teachers decided to do their, their own creation. And so we looked at the, we started with 12 different curriculums and narrowed it down to two. Last spring, we voted as a, as a middle school cohort for Amplify. And it has been an interesting path from that moment where we decided that Amplify is the curriculum we're going to go with to where we are today. And it's, it is absolutely a guaranteed and viable curriculum. We can, we could say that the students at Osteo Middle School are getting the same stories as the students at Maple Grove Middle, at Northview Middle and at Brooklyn Middle. We teachers still have some creativity though in how we approach those stories. And that has been really interesting. We started with Amplify. Teaching Amplify with fidelity and it became the students walking into the room. Are we doing Amplify again? Are we really doing Amplify again? I hate Amplify. Well, Amplify is the platform through which our scholars are learning. And so that's where we teachers needed to do a little bit of a vocab change as we're presenting to students. And also a little bit of a mind shift for us in order for students to recognize this is just where some of the times you're typing in your answers. Amplify has a very rigorous text basis. We have, in, in eighth grade, we are going to be starting Romeo and Juliet trimester three, which is a ninth grade text. We are doing, we did the graphic novel Frankenstein, which I think finally kind of turned the, the tide for how students looked at, at the work that we're doing. And it's been fun and challenging for teachers. My PLT is meeting more often. We are looking at our end result. What is our summative? How are we going to meet the needs of all kids to be successful on that summative? The, the texts are highly rigorous. Each of the activities are tied to the Minnesota State Standards. The summative assessments are all tied to meet proficiency on the MCA assessment. So we have literally apples-to-apples comparison with how our students are doing on our unit assessments and how they can potentially do on the MCA review test. The question formats are the same. They have drag and drop. The wording of the questions is the same. And so that has been really exciting to see and, and to have that. Because that isn't something that I've had for the previous 27 years. So we've also done a little bit of tweaking with Amplify where we took some of the questions where the students would write the answers in the platform. We turned them into discussions. We are so grateful for all of the different Avid discussions that, that we've been exposed to. My students this year have done Socratic, they've already done a Socratic seminar. They've done two philosophical chairs activities. We did a jigsaw and a gallery walk for our Holocaust pre-work. And what you're going to be seeing in the video is, again, this is a series of questions based on our Holocaust text group. We were talking about the 1936 Berlin Olympics leading up to the Holocaust. And instead of having students either work together and type in some answers, we turned it into a structured discussion. And after we watch the video, I'll talk a little bit more about that. Okay, we have a reader. The reader is someone who reads the questions and texts or summarizes any posters, which is really more for group nine back there. The mediator is soliciting verbal responses from each member. The group then decides what the response is going to be. The organizer hands blank cards to the scribe and the scribe is going to write that comment or slogan.
He has been running his word against the hivers of the world since he was sent to the filthy pit cotton at the age of seven. Says, what does the writer mean by this phrase? And what information does the writer include in the quote?
Jesse has been like fighting back from discrimination.
Effectively walked along the track, arm in arm, directly under Hitler's box as the crowing roar in.
I think the victory for the jump meant Owens a lot because he proved that other black athletes can perform just as well as the white ones. And he proved Hitler wrong because he said that his.
Free the writer's description as a broad jump competition in the event that followed the paragraphs 21 to 23. And what do you think the victory in the moment?
That Hitler wanted the Olympics to be focused.
Yeah.
And there were rumors about what happened, like some say that they made a supremacy of, made a victory. So that could be one of the things that men are, that the reason, because he was different than others. He was different than others in Germany and that they didn't trust him.
I liked working groups and especially if we know our parts, it, we get the job, the job done faster. One thing that I like especially is when I know I like my role. I feel like I'm great at leading it, but sometimes I help others take the lead, but I don't lead them in the spotlight. I like, I try to help out. With the group that I was in just now, I feel like we were working really well, even though it was only three people instead of four. And we got the answers done along. I was reading, they were answering the questions. We all responded well. I feel like no matter, even if it was a person I didn't know in the class, I feel like we all kind of connected in that moment, even if we weren't even going to see each other for the rest of class. We worked together and that, that just kind of helped. We all connected for that moment.
So the article we were reading about Jesse Owens and how his winning all of those medals in the 1936 Berlin Olympics, how that proved that Adolf Hitler's philosophy was definitely wrong. And, and so you, you're hearing these higher level questions. It's not just, well, who was Jesse Owens? It's how did Jesse Owens winning impact Jesse Owens' life? How did it impact Hitler? How did it happen, you know? How did it impact Germany? There were, all of the Germans in the stands were going, Owens, Owens. So, so there's these higher level questions where students now have to answer the why. They're going back into the text to find the evidence to support their own thought process. One of the things that I found, and I really love hearing what's happening at Maple Grove Middle, I found that my eighth graders don't always like to talk to each other. And to find ways to bring them into academic conversations is something that I've been really focusing on as we've worked this year, which is why there have been so many different discussion opportunities. They have no problem chatting with each other, but when they have to show what they know, there's that level of, they're just a little more anxious about wanting to put themselves out there. And so we've done a variety of getting to know you activities and things like that to prepare for, for something like this. But as, as I'm looking at Amplifying, we're moving through the, the rest of this school year, it's, it's, it's only getting better for us as teachers. Yesterday at our ed camp, I facilitated an eighth grade Amplify session and we were able to talk as colleagues in all four buildings. What's working, what are you doing with the Frederick Douglass unit? What are you going to do with the Shakespeare unit? And so we're starting, we're continuing that conversation as a, as a team across the district. And as I said, I'm on a seventh and eighth grade PLT. We're looking at specific questions in our assessments that tie to specific state standards. And how do we support students so that they're all successful? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a read. So what you can see here are the, is the MCA proficiency growth, the increase in proficiency of our students of color at Osteo Middle School. And you can see the specific groups that have shown that growth, that increase in proficiency. And the increase ranges from 8% to 30% across. So what we're doing is we're looking at what's making this growth? What are the, what are the practices that are being implemented that is affecting this growth? So I wanted to thank you and I hope that in the videos you saw that connection to high quality instruction that Dr. Bass started talking about at the beginning of this session. I want to really highlight the safe role coming in inclusive environment and learning environments because you could see that, I believe, in the collaboration throughout the, throughout the videos and also that pedagogy of voice where students are talking, they're working together, they're learning from each other. Because learning is a very social thing. So, thank you.
Board members, any questions or comments?
Do we have questions?
Don't go away. Sit down.
Our subscribers made aware of Avid and what is the application process?
So the application window is going to open in about a week. And so usually we have, we do it a bunch of different, we do it fifty different ways. But advisory teachers, all, all teachers that have a sixth grade advisory will send out an informational letter from me about the program. And then teachers will talk about it in their advisory. And there's, at middle school, our Maple Grove Middle Avid has a website where you can go and look at materials, see an introductory video from me about what it is and who might, who might want to be in the class. And then we open it up for applications. When, like last year, we had 102 applications for 56 spots. So we really go through and look at kids who are in the green and the yellow. We want to, to give them, get them in there first for it to be, you know, a deeper, more meaningful experience for them. But they do have to do like an interview on Flipgrid. So I send those out. It's, and kids who make it through the interview process then move on to the next round. It ends up being, at this point, normally have to lottery kids in for those 56 spots. Next, next year, we're hoping to expand it to where every sixth grader has an Avid experience, have an Avid elective class for a trimester. And so we'll be, it'll make it even more of an equitable experience to recruit through that process.
And then I just had a question. Laura, that, one of the slogans at your school, I feel like I've heard something about, you said about doing hard things or never giving up, but what is another crest view?
Oh, our vision that Ms. Webster created is an inclusive and safe environment that sees each scholar as unique, gifted and capable, a welcoming community of equitable access, high expectations and rigorous learning that amplifies the identities of the students we serve, a school of belonging.
Okay. And was there something else? I feel like I've heard another teacher about knowing they can do hard things or we don't give up, something about that.
I feel like that's just, maybe just something that I've said and the kids have said and our teachers are saying, yeah.
We can do hard things.
We do, yeah. We, yep. We have to, we have a lot of self-talk. We have to, we have a lot of self-talk. All of us, teachers included.
I think, I think what you might be referring to, because a lot of teachers will say this, um, it's a growth mindset thing. We don't say, I can't. We say, I will try, or I can do this, or we will practice. I think that's what she was referring to.
It's just ingrained in us.
I do, actually, um, back to Crestview. Um, first, I just really wanted to acknowledge that I appreciated you, um, talking about how it's part of your practice to be both inclusive and safe and hold children to high expectations. Um, I think that it's really important that we do that together. Um, and that you also talked about this being, um, routine. This isn't just once in a while, it's routine. So I really appreciate that. Um, a question I have is, um, is the Concept Quest part of the Bridges or is it separate? So it is part of it.
Yes, great question. I thought I was clear, but you know, you never know.
Well, you might have, but I didn't write it down in my notes.
All right. Um, so when we have our, so we talked about that twenty minutes of number corner, our hour session, um, our lessons. After the lesson, there is a time for practice. So it's workbook pages, it's workplaces, which are games. So kids get to play, or they have the option. So it's within, um, and they just created it not too long ago. In fact, when Tammy Probert was our tag teacher, she found it. Because we found from our fifth grade teachers that they needed more. And so Bridges bought it, and now it, it wasn't Bridges, but Bridges bought it. So now it's part of our curriculum, and they aligned it with our units. So it's a beautiful pairing of extension.
Okay. And so I guess this question is maybe more for Robin. Um, this seems to be working really well at Crestview. Do we have information about how it was going at, at the other elementary schools? Or is that something that we're, um, planning to evaluate?
Right, we're continuing to evaluate, and, um, we're really looking at implementation. You know, people are implementing at different, um, different levels as they get into it, and some taking a little bit longer. And so one of the things that we've done with our, um, tag teachers, our talent development, academic achievement and gifted support teachers, is they go into math to support Concept Quest and really get kind of that conferring piece of, you can hear, Laura was asking questions as the kids were talking. But that's what the tag teachers do. They go to each other classrooms, they do that. Um, so that is happening across all, the whole system. So we're continuing to look at what kind of growth we're seeing by that, and we're also collecting student feedback.
Um, so my final question on that is, um, the growth from fall to spring. Uh, is this specifically in regards to, like, I guess what I'm trying to ask is like, how does Concept Quest fit into, um, the change in growth?
Yeah, and so, you know, so that's something we're implementing. So we're kind of looking at all of the best practice things. It's really hard to pull out. And so that's where we want those student conversations and to find out what students really think about Concept Quest. We're also talking to teachers and, um, classroom teachers and the tag teachers to find out who's choosing this. Because this was, one of the ideas of doing this was we want students to get that confidence that, uh, everyone here today has talked about, so that they choose more rigorous opportunities. So that when they go to middle school or to high school, that when a teacher offers them something, some kind of an extension, they'll be, they'll have the confidence to do that. So that's, we want to do that, kind of that mindset piece of it to say, like, I'm capable of this. And that's what we're starting to hear across all areas, all sites, that students are feeling more confident and selecting Concept Quest to do instead of playing a math game or a genre motion game.
Okay, thank you.
That's one of our goals for doing this kind of program.
I, um, I just have an Avid question as well. Um, actually, it's, I don't know, this might actually be for, I don't know who.
Okay.
But, um, so I know that Avid is more rigorous than the middle school, um, model that we had previously done, where we had the different teams, right? Houses, whatever we called them. Yeah, it's totally different. But.
They're not related. I mean, they're not.
Well, that's what my question is. Because we're seeing that obviously Avid is showing, um, success in our, for our students, and it's helping them in other areas. Um, and we moved away from the middle school model. And we have more kids wanting to participate than are allowed. I guess what I'm wondering is like, how do we make a program that is successful available to more students?
That's why I was going to have Dr. Bass share what we have for Avid across our system. So it's more than just.
And we have a principle here to talk about, uh, going schoolwide.
Yeah. No, that'll answer your question.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So let me, let me take it from the systems and I'll pass it to you for site. Matt?
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, so each of our secondary sites, um, and 279 online is actually going to a virtual online Avid demo, um, here in the next couple of weeks, I found out earlier today. So, so all of our secondary sites, with the exception of OALC, have chosen this evidence-based practice to grow in their schools. So we've offered, right, we've offered it, but we wanted them to have agency and confidence in choosing it and seeing that this being replicated is something that they want for their, for their school and for their scholars. And so the buy-in is incredible. We've had two, uh, secondary site implementation team meetings where we're cross-pollinating in Avid sites, like Maple Grove hosted our first one, and then we went to, uh, OASIO Senior High. And so we're, we're showcasing sites that have already launched Avid so that the ones who are coming on board are able to replicate what they've learned. And so it's, it's powerful, right? Because then we're getting to, we're getting to what they found as transformative faster because they're not having to try some stuff out. They're learning from the examples of like, okay, we tried this, that didn't work as well. Here's what we did, and this had the greatest impact. And so there's some wonderful conversations happening across all of the secondary sites. So the middle school and high schools come together, and we're, and we have, we're going to visit Roseville area schools. They have a national demonstration school, so we're going to visit them next week to see, um, specifically how they've, they've done it, how they've implemented, what we can learn from them. Uh, Julia, in fact, we were talking about, we might explore being a national demonstration site ourselves at Maple Grove Middle School. So maybe you want to talk about what it's like to try to bring Avid schoolwide so that it's not just the students in the elective who are experiencing Avid, but the entire school is experiencing Avid?
Yeah.
Yeah, so as, when I, when I came to Maple Grove Middle School, I was blessed to have Julia as our coordinator. And, um, you know, going through the pandemic, we took a little, you know, dip in kind of how we were providing professional development for the whole staff, implementing all the different key factors of it. Um, and then we're taking back up, but the key part here is the professional development that is being applied to our whole building. So when we come together, we're learning all the different Avid strategies with a focus on WICER so that every student in our school, sixteen hundred of them, are getting exposed to these different strategies to use in all their classrooms, whether it's FIAD, math, tech ed, whatever the class is. Um, they are able to apply these and such skills from our, our strategies wherever they're at. Um, and we've been talking for a couple of years, like, how can we expand this? Because, you know, you're, you're limited to the funds you have in Maple Grove Middle School. We don't have a large capacity or a pocket to pull from. So we use what we get and, and we get creative. And so we're able to, like, two years been talking about, how do we get every sixth grader exposed to it? We're calling it Avid Launch, so that every sixth grader will have a trimester of Avid, which is really middle school one-on-one. How do they learn these study strategies and all the things that we want them to carry with them from middle school up through high school and beyond? So we're going to be able to offer that as part of our, our wheel next year. Um, so that, now granted, there are some sixth graders that won't get it till their trimester. That's okay. Um, they are going to get exposed to it. So then in seventh and eighth grade, when they can apply for the elective course, um, they'll have a lot more knowledge. But even if they don't do the elective course, it's going to benefit them in every way that we want it to.
Thank you. I feel like this is a really good example of what we, I feel like, ask for a lot, which is what's working, why is it working, and how do we quickly implement? So I'm really excited to hear about this, this new development. Um, so yeah, that's really great. Um, and I appreciate hearing from everyone here tonight. Did you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I just, yeah, I just want to say thank you so much for a beautiful presentation and all the work that you're doing. What I see here is a transformative approach that includes cognitive psychology, meeting kids' mental health needs, um, the growth mindset, as well as just a, a coaching model that really supports students where they're at and looking at them for their individual needs and interests and growth. And so I'm really, really grateful for all of you and the work that you're doing.
Yeah, I'd also want to say thank you. Um, I felt optimistic from the very beginning of just what I was hearing, especially, um, starting with Crestview. Um, and so I, I'm just grateful to all of you and, um, the rest of your colleagues for all of the hard work you've been putting into making sure that our scholars are succeeding. Julia, I'm a huge Avid fan. Um, I've personally seen the success of Avid, um, to the point where I was surprised my own kid had an AP course in their schedule. The first year of high school, so, and now I know why. It all, it's starting to make sense. Um, and yeah, I, I think, you know, personally, I struggle with seeing these results. One, wondering if it's replicable, um, we look at like additional cohorts. Um, but two, just knowing that only certain kids have access to, um, this program. And anytime I hear about a lottery system in education, it just, um, it gets at me. But I, I really just want to say thank you and just proud of the work that I'm seeing. I do have some additional questions on the segregated data that was presented earlier, and I'll follow up separately. But, um, thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
So I just, um, I just want to say, I know it's been a really long day for you all. Thank you so much for giving up your time and being here and showing these beautiful scholars. It just warmed my heart. I saw Julia tear up a little bit with one of them, and I was too. So I think, um, that's why we're here, right? To see that engagement and see that excitement and learning. I've been hoping and praying and wishing for Avid to be district-wide for a long time. It is where I work. Um, and the beautiful thing about Avid that some of my colleagues might not know about is that there's so many strategies in Avid that you don't have to be in an Avid class to have the Avid strategies. In fact, where I work, all of our professional developments have Avid strategies that we are using as learners so that we, modeling so that we can do that. So I'm excited to see how that's going to grow and, um, that every scholar will have this opportunity to, to learn those, um, learning skills. They're the skills of learning, right? So, um, anyway, love you all. Thank you. Get some rest.
My staff will kill me, but we're running Socratic seminars at the staff meeting tomorrow, so come on over and watch it. I won't tell them you're coming if you're coming.
Yeah, if you take my conferences, peer conferences, I'll.
Just, I, I know you've been thanked a lot. Um, I just, I want to also express, um, our appreciation for you all coming tonight. So the board looks at a lot of high-level satellite data. And so to be able to have you all come in and show the stories that aren't necessarily reflected in our large, our high-level satellite data is like everything, right? To, to be able to see how hard folks are working on the ground and how much joy you're having and experiencing with scholars in a transformative way. And the panel that, that Julia put together, um, when they hosted, uh, Avid Site Implementation for all of our secondary leaders, I mean, the kids that she had present, I mean, that, that came up to speak on their experience, I mean, the way they talked about, they talked about it as a family, right? Like, the words that they used were all the things that we want and one of our core values of belonging. And it was just like, and they're, and they're experiencing and living it. Um, it was just, it was awesome. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the support that came in audience as well. And, um, we look forward to Zangland in a couple of weeks.
One additional thing you have in your packet is the, there's a Concept Quest in there. Not for you to do the math tonight. That was actually one of the activities that one of the students was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next team is our financial team. So going over the long range from that, um, financial planning budget update. A quick change out here. Good job, John. No pressure. We've had a good APAC, we've had a good. You're up, John. You can introduce your wonderful team.
So who votes? We switch the budget process through video. Because I'm right there.
Here's John Cranchino.
Can we make it a Concept Quest? Guess who was the math major?
If we're doing a video, it's going to be animated.
Absolutely.
Case like not in.
All right. Well, thank you. Uh, this evening's conversation around the fiscal year 2025 budget will be divided into three parts. General overview of the budget process, review of the budget adjustment proposals, including bringing forward one strategic investment, um, for consideration, and capital budget requests. So the first document, which, um, is up here, is the, um, diagram you may be familiar with. It's the Long Range Financial Planning, or LRFP, model that the district uses and which holds two purposes, a solid data-driven and collaborative budget process, as well as a comprehensive financial projection tool. Few things I'd point out on this diagram. First, the mission is at the center. This is especially important as we make proposals on how we allocate our limited resources as a system. We need to stay focused on the mission. The gray ovals around the mission represent the work our staff, particularly budget managers, do throughout the year to develop budget proposals based on strategic priorities of the district and the guidance of the school board. Tiled boxes on the outside represent the school board's role in the process. Tonight, we're preparing for the work that you will see in the box on the left side of the diagram, specifically for the board to approve budget adjustments that are being brought forward and have gone through the extensive LRFP process. The final item to highlight is the box on the top right-hand side, which are the guiding principles for the LRFP process. The next page is an overview of our annual budget adjustment process, how the requests come forward. As I stated earlier, all budget requests come forward. Uh, that come forward should align with, um, and support the district's mission and strategic directions. Each proposal, as you will see, um, down under number six of this particular page, will be proposed and evaluated using the pair or program efficiency abandonment and redirection process. This ensures that there is an intentional process for evaluating the impact of the proposed budget adjustment. Also, based on guidance from the school board back in October, all budget requests should have a cost-neutral effect, meaning any proposed increase in budget capacity in a particular area, there should be an offsetting budget reduction in another area based on extensive prioritization process that is conducted by each budget manager. Um, the exception to this requirement, which was introduced a few years ago into the budget process, is an element called strategic investment. This is a proposal that does not have a budget reduction offset, but because of the potential impact of the request on the mission and strategic direction, the board would be asked to consider using fund balance to fund the request. You will see one of these strategic, uh, investment proposals with, um, the recommendations as we get a little farther into it. The last item we'll draw your attention to is number seven, which highlights the fact that these budget requests have, on January twentieth, gone through our LRFP advisory group, which includes community members for feedback and evaluation. And we'll go through some of that, um, feedback at the regular business meeting on the twentieth. Next page of the packet is, I think it's page twenty-two in your budget packet. Yeah. Is the annual timeline for our budgeting process. Our process starts in April of each year as we begin with the pre-planning phase and ends in June of the next year as the school board approves the budget. You can see multiple touchpoints of various staff and stakeholder groups, which demonstrate the collaborative nature of the process. You also note that the school board has nine different touchpoints throughout the budget process, both to keep you informed as well as give direction to make decisions. This document highlights key dates in the budget process and then the items in blue where the board takes action. I will now turn it over to Kelly Venusa, Director of Business Services, to walk us through some of the base financial info related to our budget process.
This next document is our fiscal year 2004 adopted expenditure budgets for all of our budgeted funds. So again, the long-range financial planning process has been utilized for more than ten years. We utilize this for all of our budgeted funds except for our guest service fund, which is shown in the orange section of this pie chart. Um, the pie chart shows the size of our funds in relation to each other. As of the adopted budget, we had a $353.3 million. As of the adopted budget, we had a $353.3 million um combined budget for all of those funds beginning of fiscal year 24. It does not include our grants like compensatory Title I Achievement integration or any of the ESSR funds. Rather, we bring those budgets to the board monthly as those grant approval um processes are given by the granting entity, which is either federal or local um source. And as of December, there was an additional 57 million in the general fund alone in this act of grants. And overall, we're ready to move on at the end of December. The next document in your packet is um a document called the estimated major cost driver. So again, just to orient everyone to this spreadsheet, at the top of the spreadsheet is our fiscal year 24 adopted budget. We think of our budget in big drive categories, salary, budget, purchase service, supplies and others. So we have a combined budget of $290.9 million for the 2024 adopted budget. To that, we use our percentage change, which is 3%, which is consistent with prior years. So you can see that increase there. And then what we do um is we use that tiny assumption of 3% um as we start to fill out this document. So the starting point for all of our expenditures uses a prior year trend. So for fiscal year 25, you can see that um at the end of this document, we've already allocated 1.97% of that 3%. So we've already identified um areas of growth and that's about similar to what we did in previous years. This next document is our general fund five-year financial projection. So again, a little bit of history. Um, this is a strategic priority again, with two goals or outcomes for a long range financial planning process. First one was to build that framework, that was our first document that John reviewed. And then the second was to design a long range financial forecast model. Again, this this model is a high-level visual organizer for our financial forecast. And there are three sections to this projection. Top section shows our revenue expenditures, differences, fund balance and fund balance percentage for a seven-year window that begins with our actual for fiscal year 22 and 23, the adopted budget for fiscal year 24, and the projections for fiscal year 25 through 28. You typically see some operational adjustments under this chart. There are none at this time. The assumptions section then shows our revenues and expenditure assumptions, which are being used for fiscal year 25 through 28. We have revenue increasing based on changes in the legislation this past spring. Revenues will fluctuate between a 2 and a 3% increase for the general or basic formula allowance. The estimates from from the Department of Debt are included for fiscal years 25, 26 and 27. Expenditures again are projected to increase 3%, which is consistent with our prior year tactics and haven't been changed at this time. So if we exceed that 3% for cost, we'll be outside the plan where we can reduce the spending at a greater rate than the funds production. The middle section shows the budget projection for revenues, which is in blue and expenditures in red. The trend lines of those same colors show the show the general trajectory of each of those items. And you can see the expenditures are projected to outpace revenues beginning of fiscal year 26 by almost 3 months. We do not have another lever at this time like the operating referendum that was approved by our community last year to account for any additional spending in the future. The final section looks at the fund balance projection for the same time period. The green bar represents our actual and then projected fund balances for each year. The orange bar then shows our minimum fund balance, which is set at 5% for board policy. And again, those trend lines show the trajectory of those fund balances related to the minimum. As you can see, the fund balances are projected to start to decline in fiscal year 26. We will continue to monitor the financial projections in order to maintain the board required minimum fund balance of 5% in the future. All of the requests that are being reviewed this evening, as well as the one-year only strategic investments of $1 million are already included in the financial production.
Thank you. So as mentioned earlier, uh, each of the budget adjustment um proposals or strategic investment proposals need to go through the pair process to ensure consistency in the evaluation process. So page 27 and 28 of your packet, you have a blank version of the document that the budget managers complete, included our questions about the intended impact of the proposal, how the proposal aligns with the strategic plan, how the proposal aligns with racial equity work, how the budget manager is going to measure the effectiveness of the proposal, what impacts it may have on other departments and what legal or school board policies may be affected by this proposal. Once the proposal is complete, the pair goes through an evaluation with the original department, then through all budget managers district-wide, and finally through that LRFP advisory team you mentioned earlier. That includes some community members. At any point during the evaluation period, budget managers can make adjustments to their requests based on feedback from those groups. So starting on page 29, you're going to see a summary of all the budget requests. The first section represents recommendations for the general fund broke down by instructional and non-instructional categories. The middle section outlines strategic investments. Also to provide flexibility for increased enrollment next year and again to ensure that we can provide the same level of services, we proposed a um, we have a proposal for a staffing contingency that would only be allocated if enrollment warrants it. We've also added additional funding to support the new Family Medical Leave Act implementation. And then starting on page 30, you'll see line-by-line list of proposals, including a summary as provided by each of the budget managers. And I'm going to go through the big areas. So starting with community engagement. Now, community engagement is a self-sustaining fund, so their request is a $482,536 increase intended to be offset with program revenue. That increase includes adding 1.0 FTE talent acquisition specialists, the addition of 10 FTEs site supervisor and reduction of 2.0 FTE program managers. Moving to the division of leadership, teaching and learning. Requests here are net zero and cost neutral. And the addition of boys volleyball at all high schools, um, including an increase in ticket fee revenue and supply budget budgets to support. Add the 0.73 FTE library media specialist previously funded through ESSR. Add 2.0 FTE special education teachers at the OEC to increase um the age of the transition program there. Increase and add a year with new legislation, so we need to support that. Also add 3.0 FTE special education, educational support professionals at OEC for the same reason. Add a 1.0 FTE CVVAT vocational trainer. Add 1.0 FTE student services accounting specialists and reduce 0.2 FTE student services assistant director. Add 2.67 FTE social workers previously funded through ESSR. Add 2.0 FTE teachers for special education contingency. Add 1.0 FTE speech language pathologists and reduce 0.22 FTE counselors. Reassign 2.77 FTE from 279 online teachers to the staffing contingency. Moving into the Human and Administrative Resource Team Division or HART, again with a net neutral um proposal. Eliminate 1.0 FTE facilities operations specialist and add 1.0 FTE irrigation specialists. Savings from this change would be applied to the supply budget. Moving to instructional informational technology team or I2T2. And again, this is from within the general fund, so this is still a net zero proposal. Restructure leadership team in I2T2 to add 2.0 FTE directors. Eliminate 2.0 FTE coordinators and transfer 1.35 FTE techno uh technology educational support professional to the technology capital levy within the capital fund. I'm going to move to the strategic investment that Kelly uh mentioned earlier for $1 million. For bringing this forward, um, the investment will allow the district to maintain the following mental health positions. So I'm going to call them as an app, but it's really a maintain. Add six uh 7.66 FTE social workers previously funded through ESSR. Uh, this is a one-year only add and add one uh 2.7 FTE psychologists previously funded through ESSR. Though today, there is a one-year funding gap with the new student support aid funding by the legislature. Um, and and this addition will allow for the completion of a local collaborative time study of our mental health positions to ensure that we have the proper staffing levels set going forward into future years. Okay, so moving on.
I'm sorry, I I have some questions, do you want me to wait till the end?
If we can save them to the end, we'll do the whole thing and then come right back to. We have the experts in the room too to help with that.
Okay.
I don't know what all these things are. On pages 33 through 36, you'll see that the color-coded results of the feedback from our LRFP advisory team, which includes members of the community. The green represents positive or neutral feedback, yellow represents an an area of concern or question, uh, and red represents perspectives that may have um, that may see the proposal as having a negative impact. Proposals are evaluated this year um and were primarily primarily seen as positive or neutral with a few areas of concern. Specific feedback was given to each budget manager at the conclusion of the LRFP meeting and they had that opportunity to make adjustments to what you you actually saw as we just presented. So I'm going to turn it back to Kelly to who else on moving to the capital budget from the end piece.
Okay, so now that takes us to the capital fund five-year projection. So again, this budget, the budget scored on a zero-based budget approach. So every request that we made for any dollar of capital has to be requested through this process. Um, the projection's been updated with the next year's five-year norm projection, which were finalized in January. Again, the top section shows the revenue expenditure differences, fund balances and fund balance percentage for a seven-year window that begins again with actual for 22 and 23, with the adopted budget for 24 and then projections to 25 between. We will see some operational adjustments under the chart. This line highlights adding 1.4 million expenditures for fiscal year 25 and $200,000 in fiscal year 26 for a net change of 1.6 million. The assumption shows um the revenue expenditure assumptions of zero being used for fiscal years 25 through 28. Then the middle section shows the budget projections for revenues again in blue and expenditures in red. The trend lines of those same colors show the general trajectory of each of those items. As you can see, our expenditures are projected to outpace revenues as planned. The final section looks then at the fund balance projection for the same time period. The green bar represents our actual and projected fund balances for each year. And then the orange bar shows the minimum prior fund balance of 10% for this fund. Again, the trend lines show the trajectory of the fund balances related to that minimum. And as you can see, we're managing this fund to maintain that minimum fund balance of 10%.
Okay, so just like the LRFP budget adjustment proposals, you'll see the details of the capital request proposals categorized by each division, starting on page 39. Let me give really kind of a higher level summary of these because they're like, especially as we get into, there's a lot of detail here. But please make sure you're utilizing that detail as you're going through. So starting with the community engagement division, um, $75,000 primarily for replacement of two cameras, a poster printer, two computers and editing software, purchase branded canopy tent, purchase signage at elementary locations for parking, purchase magnetizer to make small magnets. And um, one of the things that we did that are built within each division is um, and and really this comes to a lot of really hard work by the budget managers. We were able to create a little, at least a partial contingency in each division. So they have some flexibility and rather than turn that money back to business services, we recommended they keep it and hold it for the year. So if things come up, which they do, they can start by utilizing their contingency. So I'm happy to say each of each division has a contingency set up. So as we move to um the LTL, um, their capital budget is $3,216,662 in the areas of replacing sports uniforms and equipment, music attire, marching band uniforms, maintaining our multilingual text communication system, purchase instructional materials and curriculum resources, maintain concurrent enrollment offerings, again, the contingencies and they have some in in other areas, um, as well as just a general one. Purchase media center materials, music and percussion equipment, maintain all our online software resources and maintain capital allocations and replace capital equipment in the buildings. Moving to the um HART, Human and Administrative Resource Team, $5,291,541. Maintain our lease commitments for instructional spaces, athletic facilities, commencement, flexible rooms, equipment, camera systems, uh contingencies for equipment, special assessments, insurance deductibles and security and emergency management. Purchase furniture, fixtures and equipment for um flexible room projects. Replace ground maintenance and custodial equipment. Purchase storage sheds for Birch Grove, Fair Oaks and Plummer Lake. Replace cafeteria tables, AEDs and walkout matting and purchase lockdown shades for all buildings district-wide. In the main capital portion for of the I2T2 division, there's just a zero net cost, um, which is essentially using the E-rate revenue to maintain our enterprise technology licensing, support, Ethernet and cloud backup solutions. So our total um capital request is $8,583,203. And then the last piece is, which is pages 43 and 44, is the capital projects technology levy specifically for $13,493,345. Uh, the two, there's two divisions making up that dollar amount, being Human and Administrative Resource Team or HART with $2 million. This is all in the Security and Emergency Management Department. So replacing camera and card access systems, maintain camera licenses, visitor management system, tip line and door intrusion systems, maintain existing leases for equipment and then establish contingency. And then moving to the I2T2 team at a little over 11.4 million. Continue enterprise technology positions and casual labor. Transfer in 1.35 FTE instructional technology ESP staff from the general fund. Maintain enterprise technology licensing, support, software licenses, internet filtering, wifi access, technology repair and parts, maintain our existing leases. Disposition of and cleanup of analog equipment, construction site equipment and fiber optic equipment. Replace SPAM, the sound system and technology equipment. Maintain digital display, cybersecurity services, phone systems and software, switches and wireless access points, mobile device management software, software subscriptions and licenses and school notification system. And finally, continue technology secondary support positions. That's a lot. So next steps in the budget process is to bring forward the FY 2025 budget adjustments and the FY 2025 capital budget to the board per through on February 20th. Um, and with that, we will turn it back to either Chairman State Jones or Vice Chair Prince. I'm not sure who's in charge as I wasn't here to start for questions, thank you.
Well, really, uh, board members, do you have questions or comments?
I have a couple, but if anybody else wants to go first. Okay, um, so I I might have missed it, but do we have this for the other set? For the operating capital?
It's that's just for the the general.
Okay, that's what I thought. So most of these are green, a couple of yellow, so that's a good sign. Except for the restructure of Technology Leadership Team, there's a lot of red in here. Can we talk about that?
Yeah, so I think there's, there's a lot of, um, as we looked through the commentary and had the conversations and I heard from a variety of the groups, the discussions, so um there's helping to build capacity and understanding in our system of what needs to happen to lead and support technology as as our entire system. Uh, so a few things to kind of understand that has led to this point of the restructuring. Three years ago, we went through a significant uh shift and reorganization and realignment of all the technology staff. At that time, we did not make any adjustments to the leadership structure, but we brought in 32 additional staff into I2T2 with all the tech ESPs coming in. So we doubled the size in a year of what actually, how the technology department operates. We also shifted how we created teams as we were coming out of the pandemic, looking at how technology services now needed to be delivered as we expanded one-to-one programming K through 12. And we moved the majority of our employees into a mobile workforce fleet, which changes the style and engagement of technology. The other component is, you know, since we revamped our Digital Learning for All Plan and we're seven years into this new revamped plan, our system has changed and the needs of how we engage with technology as a system has changed as well. So last spring, our ex, um, with our existing leadership team, with the way it's currently structured is it's an. is it's an executive director and then coordinators. So it's the only division that does not have any assistant directors or directors in between in the executive leadership position down to the next level or layer of leadership. The coordinator position has changed and evolved as our technology needs have changed and expanded, and they underwent a job study with human resources department. What came out of that job study with those existing coordinator positions is they were already engaging in director-level work, and by nature, because we don't have director-level positions there, I'm stepping down into director-level work to help fill the gap of what we're doing within our new, the leadership that has to exist in order to support what we do for technology services. So after kind of reflecting of how to best structure the leadership team, the proposal that's in front of you is eliminating two of the coordinator positions and creating two director positions. Essentially, we're going to create two technology departments, or two departments, and thinking of the lens of the role that cybersecurity has now come into play in the last two years, we're creating a, basically a department of technology, which is more of your traditional thinking of technology hardware structure, and how that engages within the classroom and the learning space, and then a department of information systems and security. So a director of technology and a director of information systems and security, which would align with many business structures outside of kind of the public sector of having an information security officer and a technology director to provide the strategic-level leadership that needs to occur as a system with implementing effective technology solutions and ensuring that we have the security of those solutions as we move forward. Currently, within Osseary Schools, we don't have anybody dedicated to cybersecurity. We're pulling a lot of individuals together to ad hoc and make leadership capacity happen in that space, so this is also a step to build strategic capacity around cybersecurity leadership within our organization as we continue to, to move our work forward. So there's helping to build system understanding of why a leadership structure and change because of the, the business unit, which operates and looks very different than what would happen in a classroom or in a building with principal-level leadership. So that's where there's some disconnect in, in understanding what that looks like and how, what that means as a system as, as we move forward. So that, that kind of lends itself to where some of the commentary came back with, with the recognition and understanding of how all of that fits together and plays within the space of technology in our larger landscape of, of Osseary Schools. I think you also have that layer of anytime you're looking at adding or changing leadership positions, particularly at the district level, as we also balance out the needs of what happens within the direct classroom instructional space, and, and helping to kind of bridge that gap of why the value is here, to ensure that we have leadership that can do the throughput all the way down to our tech ESPs and our TSSs, our tech support specialists that are in the building every day engaging with our staff and our students, that we can continue to move our strategic vision around technology that aligns with the complete district mission vision.
I appreciate that, like, in-depth perspective. So I guess what I'm taking away from that is a lot of the red is more around concerns about how this is going to impact existing positions and the, the general operation of the department already. The other question I had was, I thought, and I know I can't find it. What is the financial? Change that, because I thought I saw a zero, and that doesn't sound right.
Yeah, so it ends up being a net zero in the general fund. So with the shift in positions, it's, it's about an increase of less than fifty thousand dollars depending on who gets hired, if they're internal, you know, all of those pieces in the hiring practice, but overall, it is a, it is an increased change of less than fifty thousand dollars, but how, it is not impacting the general fund because we're offsetting that by taking current tech ESP positions that exist that are being paid for out of the general fund and moving them into the capital projects levy. So the capital projects levy had an increase in funding, so there's capacity within the capital projects levy to consume that additional increase of what that would mean in the shift in positions.
Okay, thank you. That makes a lot more sense, because I was confused about how adding leadership would cost zero dollars.
It's zero dollars in the general fund, there's an increase that's occurring within the capital projects.
And I think that question is really where we also get it's show, is because of that.
Okay.
I think that you pretty well summarized what the feedback came back as, like, how are you doing?
Sure. Okay. Well, I really appreciate that thorough explanation of that. I have another question, but I can't remember what it is, so if anybody else wants to.
Wasn't the first time you had to explain it.
I have a question overall on page thirty with the additional headcounts and the indication of the use of Esser dollars. What I'm wanting to understand is the net headcount pre-COVID, so is this actually an increase in headcount, or is this more about the use of the funding side where the certain dollars funded it previously, then with Esser, and then now post-Esser? So is, are these actually net increases from prior to Esser funding?
You're talking about the FTE for the social workers and specialist?
Yeah, so all of the line items that have that reference point. The one four, one hundred and forty thousand, seventeen thousand, and then I'll ask with the media specialist in a moment, but so are those net increases in headcount, or is this just a matter of funding movement?
So short answer, those positions didn't exist in twenty-twenty before we hit the pandemic.
Or did the level of mental illness hit us?
Due to the level of mental illness, yeah, obviously we saw some massive changes. And we had some, some very robust conversations about realizing that we, even though the funding went away, we can't just pull those positions, the need still exists.
Yep, yep, and I meant questioning the need, I'm just, yeah.
How can we make that work? So that's where we have to fight a little bit and figure it out and, and hit to today to be able to make that work.
Sunny, you want to speak to existing versus what's new?
Yeah, so in this, like you stated, there are many positions. There are many positions new post-pandemic, but the FTEs that are existing in this presentation are to maintain positions for social workers, school sites, and counselors. There's new funding that came into place this year, well, student support, pupil aid. Next year, we'll be getting about seventeen dollars per adjusted pupil unit for, for that aid, that jumps up to forty-eight, seventy-three for FY twenty-six. So that is why this is a one-year ask, so that we have time to evaluate the need for these positions, and also bridge that gap, so that we don't need to let people go and then hire them again.
Perfect, thank you, that clarifies. And then library media specialist, so what is the need for incremental library media staff?
So during COVID, and prior to COVID, those were, those positions were increased. Prior to that, the smaller sites had a point FTE, so they didn't have full-time positions, and it's very, very difficult to hire a point-six LMS or media specialist right now. And there's a need as we're literally working on literacy across our system to ensure that students are reading and have that ability to read independently, and the LMSs also provide support for classroom teachers and locate, help locate resources, so that's the need. It's to kind of continue what funding happened during COVID.
I'll also add within that space, as we think about our building a better future, and our media centers are turning into central learning hubs, the library media specialist is really the facilitator of that centralized learning hub space, that in order to have that position be a full one-point-O, as it's going to increase use and demand within that space, you're going to need positions to help support the school and facilitate the learning that occurs within those spaces.
Okay, got it. And then lastly, I don't.
Sorry to interrupt, but I just wanted to follow up on a question about the library media specialist. Was there not also additional funding, just like there was for the student aid personnel for a library media specialist that is coming, I guess? So would it be the same kind of thing, like bridging the gap on that?
Yeah, there is, there is, however we can supply it. So it was provided to us in the same that our basic home allowance is, and that we can choose to spend on whatever we want to spend.
Thank you, sorry.
And then last, I'm, I don't recall seeing a sport on one of these in the past since I've been on the board, so I'm just curious what, how this particular sport was selected. Certainly, there's a lot of interest in different sports, and someone may ask why this sport versus another sport.
Boys volleyball?
Yeah, so the Minnesota High School League added boys volleyball as a sanctioned varsity sport, starting next year, so this, this spring, and they'll play in the spring. So this spring is, is kind of a transition year, so the, the teams can start forming, but we can't necessarily fund it how we would fund a, a sport like girls volleyball as an example that, that already is a sanctioned sport. So it's knowing that in next year's budget, that becomes fully sanctioned, and so we have to set it up the same way we've set up our other sports, in order to provide that opportunity. And most of our schools already have a boys volleyball team, and we're just operating that in kind of a club status, so it just moves up to a full varsity.
And currently, we have all of the Minnesota State High School League's sanctioned sports? Okay.
We, well, I know this because my kids are on it, but we don't have a separate girls wrestling team at any of our high schools, which is actually why I was going to ask the next question, because we were told that there was a, a minimum required number of participants in order to have your own team at your high school, and so that was going to be my follow-up, sorry, my daughter's texting me. Follow-up question is, is there a minimum, or like a required amount of participants in order to be a part of the boys volleyball teams? But also, I wanted to ask about the increased participation fees.
I can, I don't know of a minimum that's required, I just, I just know that at least, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent positive that Park Center has a club team, but I know the other two schools do, and are already operating in running with, you know, twenty-some plus kids in each. I do know the participation fee, so, and ultimately, in order to be able to offset some of the costs and keep it cost-neutral, and we have not taken an increase in admissions fees to our activities in quite a while, so here, the, the team made the decision to make a slight increase to that, to help create revenue to be able to offset and start to create like that supply budget that's needed to go with the sport, so we can buy uniforms and those things that we previously haven't had to do. The uniforms will get picked up in capital, but like, so they can buy up balls for boys and whatever other supplies they would need for that sport.
So the activity, or the participation fee, though, it's not going to be more than?
Nope, same. This is just, just admissions in general.
Got it, okay.
Okay, can we, I just want to a hundred percent know that there's, because the, we don't have, girls is an option, girls wrestling, and we don't have that, I just don't want there to be an equity question as to, if we are saying that we one-hundred percent have every sanctioned sport, I just want to be, I want to make sure I understand that and that's accurate, because if, if we don't, then I want to be able to answer the question, why this and not this?
I was unaware of wrestling, so we have to circle back to those in charge of it?
Yeah, no, yep, so that's just, yeah, I don't need an answer right now, that's why, I'm just, I just want to make sure there's, we're, we're clear, and that we don't have an equity question come up.
Rob, do you have some input?
I believe that this is a necessity for us to have the boys volleyball team, because right, if by not creating this opportunity for the boys volleyball team, we would be out of compliance, because we have more female sports right now, and there needs to be that balance.
Okay.
So that, I believe is the reason for us to have a boys volleyball.
Okay, that helps. And that's all the questions I have.
I remember what my other question was. It's about the athletic and musical ticket fee revenue, and so we're gonna, it looks like we're going to increase event ticket prices to offset the cost of adding online ticketing, and I have a couple concerns around that. Number one, I am concerned about the equitability for families to be able to attend their students' events, if there's going to be an increase, especially because we already charge more than similar districts to attend events, but then also, you know, we chose to add online ticketing, and so I feel like that's a cost we should be observing and not passing on to families so that they can attend events, particularly because a lot of people really hate it. They would rather pay cash, they'd rather show up and pay when they get there or whatever, and so I'm curious about that item on the table.
Yeah, I can speak to that item on there.
Thank you.
So with that, I mean, one reason why we chose to go to the online ticketing, it was feedback, and I've worked with activities coordinators, they used to have feedback from attendees was to go to the online ticketing, to make things run more smoothly and be more efficient, so that's why they moved to that. They actually moved to that this year, so we're seeing that increase in taking in that cost this year. So, you know, that cost, you see that in the budget is about thirty-six thousand, so we're trying to propose a way and looking at the, increasing the ticket fees, more looking at adult ticket fees rather than the students, just so we can, we want to encourage student attendance, obviously in adults, but more so to keep the student fee for those events the same. So right now, what we're looking at, the current athletic ticket fees are six dollars for adults and four dollars for students. At all the sport events that we charge emissions for, except for hockey and football, we charge seven for adults and five for the students, or, yep, and so, I can see, we are, yeah, and then the musical, we charge eight dollars for the adults and six dollars for the students, so we're proposing to increase the adult tickets for all athletics to eight dollars, so it'd be two for everything except for hockey and football, so they would be one-dollar increase. And then the students, we want to keep across all our events for, at five dollars, so it'd be one-dollar increase for all the athletics, except for hockey and football, that would remain the same, and actually, musicals, we would take that down a dollar, so can even that for the students. So that's what we're proposing, so really, a dollar or two increase for the adults and keeping the students relatively the same. And that's where, and we're proposing, just booking out our sales that we have right now, that would come, bring in about seventy-three thousand more in revenue, so that would offset half of it, maybe about that cost to cover that online ticketing fee, the service charge, and then the rest we would, could bring back into, infuse in our activities, like supply budget services, and where we see that best supporting our sports and activities there.
I can add on that online transition, having worked with the athletic directors, so the opportunity has been there for years. We're one of the last districts in the metro to move to an online ticketing option, and one of the driving forces was last year, the state high school league moved to online ticketing only for all state-level events. So that is where the majority of high school activities and athletic is moving towards within that online ticketing status.
Do we have a scholarship program for families if they want to see their kid and they can't afford it, or not?
To cover their emission fees?
Yeah, well, let's, let's just say you have a kid in, in, I mean, not for every single game, like in a sport, but if you have a kid in a musical and you can't afford eight dollars, do we have some sort of system to help, help with that?
Most of the time, your director or your coaches or someone, or your athletic, they will get them in there after.
That's what I figured, I just want to make sure.
I don't know if that's anything that anybody knows about, but what concerns me about this is the amount of students that we have who are already identified as a part of the free and reduced lunch program, so we already know that this number of students are below a certain poverty line, and that, that doesn't account for the people who didn't apply, or maybe are just above that threshold. And it seems unjust, given the increase of inflation, the increase of expenses for our students to participate in activities, every single activity that they participate in, they've got their activity fees, which is a hundred and ninety dollars for almost every sport, and that does not include.
And that does not include additional things that they have to purchase separately to participate in almost every single activity. A lot of our sports, kids are, families are spending hundreds of dollars unless they are, um, on free and reduced where they make it a discounted service. And then I, and I guess this is maybe personal because I know so many families who don't attend events because they can't afford to. And they don't come to see their kids. Um, so I, that's, this is something I just can't support. I would like to see it removed.
Um, so for context with the, first of all, the, any of the participation fees, the free and reduced rates?
Yeah, no, I know, but you only get it if you have that. So people who don't meet that threshold still have to pay.
Sure. And, and part of it is, you know, we're, we're trying to, to be able to get in a program here that, that the state has said and the high school league said we need to add in because others have mentioned.
I'm just talking about the ticket price increase.
Yeah, I, I understand. Um, I'm also trying to kind of justify where, where the reasoning that kind of came up for it. And when you look at market studies of where those ticket prices are, um, seven dollars and four dollars is very, very low. We're, we're definitely on the very low end compared to the metro area and where those prices are. Most tend to come in at the eight and six dollar range. So even proposing eight and five is still trying to keep it on the lower side for students. Um, and again, I know we don't have a formal program to say if you can't somehow afford it. But I do know those, um, activities directors and that, or head coaches are always working in. And if they know, we'll work around it and we'll figure out a way to make that work. Um, in general, we're just trying to be able to support that. So this program has a fighting chance because most of these programs struggle the most in their first couple of years. And not having the funding to go with that is going to make that a little bit more difficult.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, increasing ticket prices is what's going to fund boys volleyball?
They're using it as an offset for, that's an increased cost to, to try to balance the pair, yes.
That, actually, the pair is being, to add the volleyball, the pair is being offset by reassigning, um, some contingency. We have a purchase seventy-nine online, you'll see in there, um, this thirty-six thousand is, uh, this, um, one, half the ticket fee is going to cover the online fee. And so we just round, we rounded that up to a full dollar and also to, so that half of that would be just infused into the athletics and activities department. Because right now, too, costs of things like supplies, transportation, workers at the games, those are going up and the budget is, been remaining flat. Um, so maybe we need a way to like add some budget capacity to the programs as well.
So I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't support an increase in ticket prices. So I, what I would like to see is this, uh, event increase removed. And if we need to pay the thirty-six thousand dollars, that should be coming, increase the pair request to cover that fee so that we're not increasing ticket prices for our families. That's what I'm asking for if you, you, does that make sense?
It makes sense, but how does that process go? Is one person allowed to take that off? Is that a vote by the board? No?
So we've typically voted for these in total. We haven't necessarily pieced them out. We can, we can, um, if we know that we're, we don't have consensus, we could do them in pieces and vote at the board meeting. Or we could get some consensus direction in this meeting. Um, and then you'd have to pull it off the agenda as a separate item. So maybe let's start with what's, what's consensus. Does that sound fair? Are there any other board members who share that concern?
Um, yeah, I'm not sure that's, I'm not sure you can pull off a line item like that to put on?
I mean, I've done it. I'm, I've been on the board when it's been done, I should say.
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying is. Okay. I guess what I'm saying is let's make sure, and I think you were going that direction. Let's make sure there are where enough people that would want to do that, um.
Other, other?
You can still pull, you can still make a motion anytime, obviously.
So I guess with that, the question would be if you're suggesting, or maybe the direction would be to the D L T L team to say, do you have an alternative for this, rather than raising the prices to balance the pair? Because we still have to do that. Otherwise, we're bringing an increase to the budget of thirty-six thousand dollars straight up that we'd be asking the board for separately. I'd have to add to it. I don't know if, if that would, doesn't necessarily fit in the strategic direction narrative, but it's possible.
So here's, I just, for clarification from what I was hearing, the ticket prices are not only taking care of that thirty-six thousand, but also other things for sports across the board. So if we say, we'll pay for this thirty-six thousand dollars and not raise ticket prices, all of the activities across the board will still be struggling, right?
I think, did you say it's like seventy-seven thousand?
Because of the increase of, in paying people to be there. I just want to make sure I was clear in understanding what you were saying.
It's more than thirty-six thousand dollars when you look at what the impact is.
That, I just want to make sure that we're, we're looking at that picture. So if we take away the ticket price increases, we're also taking away, um, some money to help pay for the people that are there and transportation, et cetera, and so forth. Is that, am I correct in understanding that? Okay, I just want to make sure what we're.
So my direct concern is raising the ticket prices. So if we can find an alternative way to address the other issues, I believe that would be in the best interest of our families.
John, can you clarify what you just said? It doesn't fit within the strategic direction.
I'm just not sure if you're calling out just that. And most of the strategic investments are intended for specifically match commission or strategic, a specific strategic direction. I just don't understand, know where a ticket price is going to pick up one of those five major areas. I don't know where it fits right. It might, we just have to take a better look at it because we're really kind of flying off the cuff at this point.
Question, John, on that though, uh, to, to your point, uh, would that be then, if it was like a strategic investment, essentially what, uh, the thirty-six thousand plus would it regenerate as well? The seventy, uh, seventy-two thousand essentially would be the ask to a strategic investment? If we wanted to support both, right?
But that's not a one-year strategic investment, that's a change in the budget for every single year. Just to be clear. I'm not saying one way or another.
Part of the concern, and I, I understand, and I frankly very much appreciate the concern for the ticket prices. Um, but the facts are, all of our costs are moving up by inflation or more at the same way. And at some point, we have to offset that. And so part of that is the balance of, is it better? My, my concern with making it a strategic piece that now becomes a permanent part of the budget is eventually.
The others.
The, when we have to come and do a reduction, that almost always is a person reduction. Not this, um, participation-based sport over here on the side that, that doesn't affect the classroom. This piece doesn't affect the classroom, this piece does affect the classroom. So that's my concern with making it a strategic investment is you bring that into play. Where I think if you can leave it over here where it becomes much more participation-based, you're not going to bring that into play. I don't want someday down the road, a teacher in ESP to lose their job because we added, um, seventy-two thousand dollars for ticketing into the general fund.
So my, so is it seventy-two total or seventy-two plus the thirty-six? So are we talking really closer to a hundred thousand?
So the revenue is seventy-three thousand. That's the revenue that we're proposing that we would generate by increasing the ticket sale, um, cost.
Okay. So it's a seventy-three thousand?
It's like two do, like two dollars for adults, students one. Yeah, and then so if we don't, if this doesn't move forward, I mean, if we don't have a capacity to cover that online, um, fee somewhere, if we don't get more revenue for that, um, so does, then we would have to look within the activities budget and cut some.
So it's.
But.
So I'm kind of coming back to my question. It's seventy-three thousand in revenue that we would generate. And the thirty-six thousand is to net neutral the online transaction fee. So in total, we're looking at about a hundred, hundred-plus thousand dollars complete here. Because you have the online transaction fee, which is about the thirty-six thousand, plus the revenue, which is the seventy-six, seventy-three thousand.
Well, the online transaction fee is already there today. So it exists.
Well, I have a question, I appreciate your heart too, Heather, for, um, these families. But just for the sake of brainstorming around this table, is there a creative solution where we can communicate better with families of the option? So they know, I mean, right now, like we're saying, we don't really know. Um, I know I worked with Dr. Heil with a, a classmate, a student who couldn't afford to try out for, you know, basketball. And I know that that was taken care of, but can his parents afford to buy tickets? I don't know. So is there, just can anyone at the table help brainstorm that? Is, is there a better way to communicate? So if you're in the situation that Heather's talking about there?
I texted, uh, Amy Tolleson when you raised the question, uh, for Douglas. And she said that the A Ds, um, take care of families. I mean, it's kind of known that they reach out to them and they take care of them. So that isn't, that isn't like formally identified, but we could, for all families who participate, have a letter that goes out to say that if you have, you know, two or more students who are participating in cooperative activities, that we offer some kind of a discount or something. I, I don't know how we would word that, but we could do something to, to make sure that we're not, that we're showing.
Like a more proactive communication rather than they just get rest? I don't, do you have any thoughts on that kind of?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I just think it's really important because I, I have kids in sports every single season. And I continuously run into families who are not aware that that's even an option and don't attend. Or they only have one parent attend instead of having multiple parents attend. Or they can't afford to bring siblings in to see a sibling participate. There's lots of different reasons why people can't attend, um, or they feel that they can't. And it does not appear to be a widely known thing. I mean, like, I've had kids participating in sports in this district for like ten years. And this is the first time I've ever heard that an A D will figure out the situation so that a family can attend.
Well, generally, it, it is not put out there. It is generally, if, if it's with the child, the child said, my mom's, if, if they have to bring it up, it's said. Because we could also get at the point, which we will come, because I've experienced it. Where Grandma Jo, Grandma Jolene wants to come and Uncle Cousin wants to come. And it just gets larger and larger, then how do we cut it and go, no, you can't do that? So it's something we would have to, um, look to create.
So what I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Um, what I'm hearing is there's a need. Maybe the better solution is what was suggested on continuing to be able to identify, um, where help is needed. That that's the better solution than saying, let's not raise ticket prices at all. Is that something you'd be willing to consider? Or do you still feel strongly that we shouldn't raise ticket prices at all?
I mean, I think it's, it's hard. It's hard for families because it's like, there's a lot of shame around not being able to afford something. So a lot of people are, I'm sure, are not coming to ask. Um, and so I, I just really struggle with that when I see my kids' teammates not have family ever show up. And it's because of reasons like that.
I wonder if we would, if, if you all would feel comfortable with us asking the activities coordinators to huddle and to potentially provide some language that, um, I just, I wonder if, if that's.
Well, I don't want to jump to say anything. I think our next step is we can meet with the coordinators and directors and get more of their information, then seeing what the ask is and where we want to go. So I don't want to put on something on record that we're going to go and maybe that happens until we get Amy Tolleson's voice in, in the room and A D and understanding that, because they're our babies. So we do need to understand how do we help that. Um, so I would say to have that conversation and see what that role is, and we can do a report back to the board, Heather. But I mean, definitely.
Yeah, so maybe we could have some sort of conversation, or like, not necessarily conversation, but some communication prior to the vote on potential solutions before we, before we decide to vote on this. Is there a way that we think we could have some sort of?
Do whatever you want, you're the board, just. No, but I'm just a little concerned that we have this, this large budget and we're, just makes us nervous. It's our first time, Heather, it's just, but you sound like you're saying it's not our first time. So, I mean, we can, of course, we can share the information before then.
I'm, I guess what I'm getting at is if there is a difference, an alternative solution, then I won't pull it as a line item in the board meeting. But I want to know that we've got some plans for a solution. How can we move forward with this?
Right.
To serve our families.
I'm sorry, and my goal is we're setting a precedence, and I never jumped us at a precedence and had a drop of a hat. So I just want to make sure we have enough time, that we're clearly making this decision, and we do it and we do it right. Because we make a decision and then out of the road, we see an impact that all of a sudden, um, fees have dropped significantly because we have more coming in and not having paying, then it puts us even in a worse financial section. But we can get that communication and we can send it out. We can gather the input of what, uh, everyone is saying and then share that. But yeah, we can give some information. But we just have to think about, and I understand it completely, I understand it. But when we say no to one thing, then something else has to go. So that's the only thing we, we have to understand. So whatever that amount of money is, if we don't do it here, something else in our system will go. And that's just what I just want to make sure the board understands.
I'm just gonna hop on, I'm gonna hop onto a soapbox for a minute. I think this is a bigger issue. And if I were running the world, no one would have to pay for any sport or fees, right? Um, and the last time we had to make really, really big cuts, that's what happened, is we put these fees on families because we had to make budget cuts. And, um, you know, at one point, it was free for everybody. And because we got funding from the state, et cetera, and so forth. So this is a big question that I, you know, I'm ready and willing to wrestle and see what we can do to, to answer the whole bigger question. I know that's not this budget discussion right now. But just to put the whole big picture, um, piece on it. And, and I feel like sometimes catching these little things helps. And it's like putting a Band-Aid on a, a whole incision.
Okay, for the purpose of direction and consensus, um, so that we have an awareness of where the, the board stands on this, are there any other members who share the concern of pulling that particular item or having it a separate consideration?
I would also like additional information. Thank you, Heather, for bringing this up. I can't say I feel strongly one way or the other at the moment, but I would like to know what that alternative is prior to the next meeting.
Any other comments on that, this matter?
Yeah, I agree with Thomas. I'd like to have more information of what our options are.
So may I ask that I have the alternative if we did not, so we're asking, uh, families area, it's not just families area, but what's the alternative to give somewhere else we can find that funding? Is that what the ask is?
Yeah.
So, yeah, let's be very explicit. So the ask is to find a different option than increasing ticket prices? Or is the ask ideas on how to better help families in need or both? Okay. Okay.
I'm in support of the entire budget. I think it's unfortunate that the ticket fees need to go up, but they went up minimally. And I don't feel, like, I personally want to upset the entire apple cart by pulling at one string. That is clearly a part of a bigger picture about what's affordable for families.
Yeah, I agree. While it's unfortunate, the reality is that there's increased costs and we try to mitigate them as best we can and share the load. And so I agree with Director Grady.
Because do we have, do our free and reduced students play less? We have no idea. We're sitting at a table. Do they pay less for tickets if they're free and reduced? No?
So what I understand from, uh, Amy Tolleson is that, um, the activities coordinators take care of those families. What take care of those families means, I, I will probably have a better answer tomorrow on what that means.
All right, so we'll look at, uh, some possible alternatives to finding, um, funding, different options for that. The athletics thing is huge. Um, and, and I just have to notice, super ten, it does concern me in two weeks, be able to flip that and turn that around and, of course, to seriously look at the projections of. and of course, to seriously look at the projections of how we do that down the road. So I don't know, sometimes ticket prices for free and reduced are less. I know there's people that maybe not be free and reduced and still need the funding, but it's like gas prices, it's, it's just, it's just like John said, so we have inflation here, we're going to have inflation here, school has inflation, and so we'll, yeah, so we'll get back the information and we'll send it, send it out, so.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments on the overall financial information presented tonight?
So I, I just want to get further direction, so are we, because we do not get together again. So are we, so when we come back and say it's this option or this option, are we still pulling a line item on this, on the twentieth?
I mean, you would make a motion, and it would depend on if that motion passed or not, you know, and even to the tie, it won't show the fail.
So the whole budget would be put on, and then a motion could be made?
And I don't want to like stop this from moving forward on one thing, but I do want us to really seriously evaluate this. So like, if, I know that we can't make a decision in less than two weeks on what to do differently, but if we could have like a commitment of we're going to try to do something, like, you know, we have a plan to solve this problem, that would feel a lot better. And I wouldn't necessarily say I have to pull this, but I would make during my comments, I would say something about it.
Would a task force?
That seems like.
We don't need that. No, we don't know, we got it, we got it, thank you.
I don't think we need a task force, I don't think, you know what I'm saying? But just like, it's a.
It doesn't have to be a huge deal.
No, 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 it is. I see, don't do anything small. It'd be like a five-year thing we're working on. But we can literally, this is just a conversation, we just got to get the right people in the room, because this is happening. We just got to see what they're doing and how we can do that. They already mean, they already have done this for some families, so we just need to, you know, look it up, fill it out.
That's exactly what I mean, I just meant to call it something.
Oh, I thought we were going to get stakeholders. People from cities are sitting on it. No, but we can get that information quick, because it is happening. We just got to be able to put in verbiage of how it's happening, and is there an alternate way to look at how to, how that to, for it to work? We can get that, we can get that.
So I think I heard, though, keep this intact, but there might be a separate action at the board meeting on this item, or comments. Okay. Any other finance questions?
I mean, I, I guess somebody's in a comment that it's a little problematic that there is a concern that was raised, and it feels like it's being shut down and railroaded, because we don't have the time to investigate it. So I, that's a bigger issue as well, that, like, as board members, we can't even raise a concern and ask for additional information without, you know, seemingly stalling an entire process and shutting the system down is what it feels like, so. I don't know if you want to do the follow-ups, or Jackie, as chair, wants to do the follow-ups and provide the information and see what direction we're sort of headed in as a board for that next meeting, but I would like more information.
Sure, no, and I, and I'm sorry if you did feel, it was, it was not that. I just had to say that with the time period that we have, and slowing down and having multiple perspectives, we're not saying that it's not going to happen, that I just wanted to make sure it was done well. So I take direction from the board, I have the two directions that the board wants, and we'll get that to you, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone understood the timeframe that we had. But if we need to get it done, and get it done, I take work to direction from you all. It's, it's, it's not a problem. So if you felt it was being shut down, it's not shut down for me, just wanted to know exactly what the request was. If it needs to go down in two days, it needs to be done in twenty-four hours, it'll be done. So it'll be done.
Everybody feel good about the direction? Okay, do we have a couple moments for the calendar before we conclude?
Sure, just real quickly, you have the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school board calendar for that, and then just a draft, there's always a draft of our calendar for the year. We do have PD day coming up for board self-evaluation process on the seventeenth, and that information will be coming via an email.
With that, I believe we are ready to adjourn. So this work session is adjourned at eight fifty-two PM.